Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for Wednesday, April 2, 2025. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times, Star Ledger, and Herald News. This is a public hearing in which any members of the public are welcome to attend. The meeting agenda is available on the Montclair website, as is a link to the township's YouTube channel where the hearing can be viewed live or after the fact. The hearing is also being televised on Channel 34. I will call the roll. Chair Harrison.
Here.
Vice Chair McCullough is not present. Mr. Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Church.
Here.
Ms. Harris is not present. Mr. Moore is not present. Mr. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Vera.
Here.
Ms. Grant is not present. Mr. Griffith.
Here.
Mr. Cruz.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Okay. And then we have a change to the agenda to announce tonight. The application number 2923 for 140 Chestnut Street for applicant Joanna Seltzer will be carried to April 16, 2025, and both the newspaper notice and the certified mailing will be for that date.
So they're not required to redo it?
They're redoing both parts, yeah.
They're not on because they didn't do it in time or correctly?
Yeah, they didn't do it in time, but I just wanted to make the announcement in case anyone saw the newspaper.
Yes.
Yep.
We have the minutes of the March 19 meeting. I have a couple of changes. On the second page for the minutes and resolutions, you should note who abstained because they weren't present at the prior meeting. I think there were some. And then on line 56, Abbott Reed changed from seeded topsoil to slow-growing and drought-tolerant sod. And on page six, line 189, delete the word existing. Anyone else with any changes to the minutes? If not, someone want to move the minutes with those changes?
I'll move the minutes with the changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Any opposed and abstentions?
Abstain.
We have the resolution for the Mercury Montclair application. I just have a change on page three, number three, in the fourth line, delete longstanding, and then insert now. So it reads accommodate a residential use now consisting of three dwelling units. The third unit isn't longstanding and otherwise behave myself. Anyone else with any changes to that resolution? Not someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain.
And then we have the resolution for the Ferguson application. I just have one change in number one on page one, delete just west of North Fulton Avenue since Essex Way is between Montclair Avenue and North Fulton. So anyone else with any changes to that resolution? If not, someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Jay, you have to abstain because you...
Why?
Yes. You voted no.
Oh, that's right, I did. Sorry, I did. I'm sure you don't.
I've been awake today. So would want to move the resolution.
You got that still. You were there.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Application, the first and only application, that is VG Ashwood LLC. This is for property at 52 Wildwood Avenue. This is an application to expand existing single-family home by constructing it to an half-story addition. Property is located in the R11 family zone, is designated on the Township Tax Maps as Lot 74, Block 4,601. Applicant is seeking a variance from Montclair Code Section 347-45B2 to permit a front yard setback of 6.6 feet from Division Street property line, whereas the ordinance requires a front yard setback of 25 feet. A variance from Montclair Code Section 347-45C4A to permit the width of the house to be 71.5% of the lot width, whereas ordinance allows for a maximum width equal to 65% of the lot width. And if necessary, a variance from Montclair Code Section 347-46C to permit parking between the house and the curb on Wildwood Avenue, whereas the ordinance provides that no off-street parking shall be located between the main building and the curb of the street. Our taxes and orders, the notice paid.
Yes, and I'll just note for the record that Mr. Moore is correct.
And note for the record, Mr. Moore arrived in the nick of time. Okay. Mr. Tremulak?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Alan Tremulak appearing on behalf of the applicant VG Ashwood LLC. Seems that my client and the architect are running a little late. I know they're coming. We just spoke a few hours ago. So I guess I proceed and make my opening comments and maybe speak very slowly until hopefully they get here. Or say a lot more than I intended to, which is actually very little. I mean, this is, as the notice indicates, property involved this 52 Wildwood Avenue. It's a fairly large lot, over one-third of an acre, located at the very end of Wildwood Avenue where it meets Brookdale Park with a little paper street, Division Street, between the subject property and the park, which creates an interesting situation, triggering the setback variance that's noted in the public notice. There are three, you know, my client is intending to construct significant addition to the existing, you know, one-family house on the property, and the application is for three variances, three C variances. One, the setback variance due to the fact that the planning department, and I think correctly so, is treating Division Street as if it was a real street when it's really a paper street with no other houses on that street, at least on this side of Wildwood Avenue. We view that more as a side yard setback, which would be six feet required, which we comply with. There's also a variance been cited for providing one of the three required parking spaces in the front yard, basically in front of the garage or in the driveway, which is not permitted. I think, you know, we're able to easily eliminate that variance by creating a parking space adjacent to the garage on the side, in the side yard between the garage and the adjacent house, and we have a drawing to show the board demonstrating that. And the third variance is a variance to exceed the permitted width of the principal structure, the house, on the property. As you know, the ordinance limits the width to 65% of lot width, and we're proposing a width of the house of 71.5%. So those are the three variances. I have two witnesses. Architect is expected momentarily, and then I also have William Stimmel to provide planning testimony. I don't think I really can call him out of order, so would have to ask the board's indulgence for a few minutes until the architect arrives. Perhaps while we're taking care of housekeeping, I did hand out to Zanah an exhibit, which maybe we can mark that as A1. There we go.
And that was prepared by whom, Mr. Stimmel?
Actually, it was prepared by my client and approved by the architect, which shows our proposed location of the third parking space on the side of the structure as opposed to in front of the garage.
Do you want to call your first witness?
Yes. In the nick of time.
Okay.
Louis Garfinkel.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Affirm.
State your name and address, please.
Louis Garfinkel, 1809 Hidden Pond Lane, Toms River, New Jersey.
Okay. Garfinkel, would you provide the board with your educational background and your professional qualifications?
And just before you do that, let me just swear in, Zanah. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
Just state your name and position with the township.
Zanah Gosme, Assistant Planner.
Okay. Yeah. Provide your background and qualifications for the board.
Good evening. I'm a licensed architect. I graduated from Pratt Institute with a Bachelor's of Architecture in 1990, and I received my New Jersey State Architectural License in 1998. I'm also licensed at New York State. I have appeared before various zoning boards, including Jackson, Teaneck, Doseig, New Jersey, as well as the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals.
And is your New Jersey architectural license in good standing, do you think?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Chairman, we accept him as an architect. Thank you. All right, Mr. Garfinkel, you prepared the plans that have been submitted to the board for the proposed additions to the house on this property?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Would you review the plans with the board, and I guess as you're doing that, you might perhaps point out where the conditions that trigger the variances that we're seeking tonight?
Okay, sure. So first, I'll just describe the building. Current two-story structure existing there, while functional, is outdated and in need of significant repairs. The rooms are small, the ceilings are low, and the overall design does not maximize the potential of the unique property. Our goal is to transform this property into a modern barnhouse design that will enhance its value and improve the neighborhood, especially given its proximity to the beautiful Brookdale Park, which we're adjacent to. The proposed design includes a comfortable first floor with an open concept kitchen and dining area, a family room, a guest suite, and a two-car garage. The basement will feature a recreational room, gym, bedroom, and bathroom. The second floor will contain five bedrooms, a laundry room, and three bathrooms. We have also included unfinished attic space that can be adapted for future use, offering flexibility. This corner lot at Wildwood Avenue and Division Street presents unique challenges. The 25-foot setback requirements from both streets necessitate the variances we are requesting. The first variance, setback variance from Division Street, now Division Street is a paper street, underdeveloped and bordering Brookdale Park. It is essentially a visual barrier, not a functional street. Therefore, we request the easterly property line to be treated as a side yard. Notably, our proposal increases the existing setback from 5'5" to 6'6". The existing house has a 5'5" setback from Division Street, and we are proposing 6.6, improving the current condition. That's the first variance we're requesting. The second is the building width variance. We seek a variance to allow a building width of 70% of the lot, exceeding the 65% ordinance. So the front facade has to be 65%, and we're 70%. The lot's unique dimensions, 68 feet wide at the front and 79 feet at the rear, make our proposal, proposed 48'6" inch width reasonable. Narrowing the structure and relocating the garage would create significant practical difficulty. Before I get to say that, towards the center of the lot, the lot gets wider, and there we're okay with that width. Narrowing the structure, now if we narrow the structure, if you look at the plans, we have a garage right, you know, in the front, and that's part of why we need this width also.
By the way, does the existing house have a garage?
No.
Okay. So you're adding a garage that doesn't currently exist.
Right.
Okay.
So we want the garage in the front versus, I mean, narrowing the structure and relocating the garage would create significant practical difficulties. If we move the garage to the backyard, and it would negatively impact the backyard's functionality and aesthetics. So if we put it in the backyard, we want to avoid that. We don't want to put, you know, a driveway going to the back. Furthermore, the intent of the 65% width ordinance, like many zoning regulations, is to ensure a balanced relationship between structures and their properties, you know, the facade of the street, the streetscape. In this case, given Division Street's status as a paper street and the park next door to it, so when you look at the facade and the streetscape, we're at the end of the block, so the bulk of our building, the width, which is part of why they made this ordinance, would be at the end of the block, you have a forest next to us, so you don't, that facade is not as, you know, problematic. In this case, given Division Street's status as a paper street, our proposal maintains the intent of the ordinance by ensuring the structure's scale is appropriate for the usable portion of the lot. Okay. The third variance, which I think we'll, I don't think we're going to need it at the end of the day, front yard parking variance. Montclair Code 34734B prohibits parking between the main building and the curb. Our design requires three parking spaces, while the garage accommodates two. We propose extending the driveway to the right of the garage with a third space beyond the front wall, which would be permitted by code. This area provides ample space for parking, for a parking spot while maintaining the required four-foot driveway side yard. We would have enough room for the parking spot plus a four-foot buffer to the property line.
And there's a drawing that's been prepared that shows exactly what you just described, which we actually marked as an exhibit before you got here, which is A1. And this was prepared with your participation shortly before this meeting, right?
Yes.
And that shows what you just described, where this third parking space would be located with the driveway widening a bit in order to allow for a third car to park there. And the drawing also shows the required, that the parking spot would be setback, the required four-foot distance from the property line. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think that concludes my presentation.
All right. So just with, all right, so there's no existing garage. You're proposing to, and you're maintaining most of the existing structure that's there now, correct?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that, no. I think we...
Well, in the front, let's say.
We left some of the foundation walls. That's about, that's about it, you know, we just wanted to save, whatever we could save.
Okay. So is there any place else, I mean, could you provide for a garage in the front of the building without triggering the lot width variance?
We would have...
I'm sorry, the house width variance?
Right. We'd have to reduce, you know, the living room, the foyer, we're just, you know, it's just something we've...
Okay. All right. And as you said, consideration was given to the possibility of relocating the garage to the rear of the building, and also the possibility of providing for a detached garage in the rear of the property. Is that right?
That's correct. We considered that, but like as I said, if, to put a bulky building in the backyard, putting blacktop to the back, you know, it would just, you know, we think we're much, much more aesthetically pleasurable this way.
Okay.
We technically could even make the building longer, you know, we're not even using all our coverage here.
You could extend the building to the rear, I think is what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Because the lot is deep, and you have more than the required rear yard setback. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else you wanted to add regarding the plans? They kind of speak for themselves.
That's it. Thank you.
Nothing further.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Yes. This is a single-family home, right?
Correct.
Okay. There's not going to be any rental or...
No.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Mr. Caulfield?
Could you tell me the existing house with the square footage is?
Okay. I have a computation, I have the existing basement. Let me just give it a second. 28, about 3,600 square feet.
So the existing house today is 3,600 square feet?
Yes.
It's big. Looks smaller than it is. And the proposed?
7,147.
Wow. That's a giant, giant reach.
It's about double, yeah.
Is there a reason why we want to go double?
Well, it's a developer. He's here tonight, and he's looking to sell, you know, looking to put up a...
I got you. You know? If you had to, if you were going to eliminate the frontage that we're talking about, you could push the house back, and you would get out of that 65%? Did you set something? Did you center the house?
Well, then we would try and leave some of the foundation that we'd end up, you know, we try to work with the house that's there, so that would, we would be, we'd have that issue. We'd have to take more, that more of the house, and we want a nicer backyard, you know, it's just a, and in fact, I believe our front yard is deeper than the other front yards on the block, too.
Okay. Five bedrooms equals three spaces?
Excuse me?
Does five bedrooms mean you have to have three spaces?
Yeah.
Is that...
Three parking spaces?
Yeah. Why three parking spaces, five bedrooms?
Yeah, that's for the residential site improvement standards.
So if it had four bedrooms, you can go two spaces?
Let me double-check that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess you've mentioned you're saving some parts of the house. Can you describe what are the, what are those things that you're saving? Okay, so it's just...
Look on drawing A1, we have a foundation wall on, kind of the front of the foundation is being kept intact, a portion in the rear of the foundation, basement plan demolition. On the first floor, there are also some partitions, the right wall, rear wall, but... That's it, you know?
Just answering Mr. Caulfield's questions, if it was a four-bedroom unit, it would have a parking requirement of 2.5, which would round down to two spaces.
All right, so essentially, the foundation, and as far as the structure itself, the raptors, anything, it's going to be demolished completely?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question I had is, you might not know this, but do you know what's the comparable square footage within, you know, 200 feet radius or at least, you know, the house is nearby?
I don't know, but Mr. Baumgartner might have an idea. Yeah, if you could talk, I don't know.
Yeah, if he's going to answer the question, he needs to, excuse me, if he's going to answer the question, he needs to come up, we need to swear him in and identify himself.
He doesn't have precise numbers.
He doesn't have the information, anyway.
Never mind.
Yeah. All right. And then you said you consider, I guess, a detached garage, and what was, the problem with that was the width of the property?
Detached.
Detached garage in the back of the property?
Right. If you did, if we had a detached garage, that could alleviate the width, and we could make the width of the building narrower. That's why we brought this up, and we considered, but it's, so we decided it's better for the aesthetics of the backyard. Also, you know, a person parks their car in the garage, and they got to walk outside in the rain and go to the house, you know, it's just much, it's more practical this way to have the parking in the front.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Griffith?
Do you have any concerns about automobile fumes being within the house?
No. It's a...
I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Cruz?
Thank you, Chair. I have no questions.
Mr. Simon?
Hi. Good evening. Couple of questions. First, for clarity, Division Street, the paper street, is it accessible by car? Like, if you wanted to use to drive, if you had decided to put the garage in the back of the house, could you enter it from the Division Street? Like, drive around? Instead of coming in directly in the front of the house on Wildwood, is that a real paved street that you could come and put the house back where the shed, where the existing shed is?
Part of it. It goes about halfway down.
So doesn't go the length of...
Doesn't go to the back, no.
Okay. That was one. The second question, regarding your, the third parking space, which you said would be four feet from the property line, how close is the neighboring house to that property line in terms of windows or actual structure?
I got to check the survey.
I don't know that it's shown on the survey.
It may not be shown. Do I have to look at the aerials?
Yeah, that's what I'm just going to look at, all right. Right. I'm going to guess at least 15 feet, just looking at the aerial view.
Okay, so you're saying, like you told, about 15 to 20 feet distance between the house?
The property line would be, looks to me about 15 feet, and we're proposing our, well, the parking spot would be, let's say, another four, so...
Got it. Okay. And my last question for the attic, it says unfinished. Are there any plans to use the attic for storage or any other...
Storage.
Mechanical units?
Storage, mechanical units, you know, pull-down ladder, you know?
But definitely no bedroom, it's a play area?
Not in our plans, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Hello.
Hey, Joe.
All right. So on your basement plan, I see that there is a bedroom, and you have an egress. But where is that egress? Do you have that? Can I see that on your drawing, like, from the outside? Is it a small window? Is it a door?
Can you repeat the question? You want to know if there's a door to the outside?
The basement plan...
Right.
...has a bedroom.
Right.
And the drawings say that there's an egress.
Oh, so will there be an egress window? Is that what you...
Right, that's what I'm wondering, yes.
I don't think we have it on the plan here. Right, well, but we're going to put a window. Well, I mean, when we get to the building department, we're going to sure have to take care of that.
Okay. Because what would the height of the window need to be in order for that to be an actual egress? egress?
Well, the windows, it's almost full, it's almost out of the, all out of the ground, you know, um, wait, wait a second.
Basement plan?
Oh, no, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not.
It's missing from the elevation?
Yes, right.
But it's a mistake, that there would be a window, or egress window-
Yeah, we're gonna have to put a window on.
Okay, yeah.
Not good.
And then what about drainage, because you're looking at pretty much doubling the size of the house, so have you taken that into consideration, since you're right up against Brookdale Park and, you know, that, uh-
You're talking like the roof drains?
Hmm?
Roof drains?
Sure, sure, yep, leaders, all of that, right.
Right, we're gonna have, we're planning to have leaders and-
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
These aren't construction plans.
Okay, not yet, right, okay, I just want to make sure that-
Of course.
With the size, that you would take that into account, because the runoff could run over into the neighbors and/or, you know, right into the recreational, you know, it's a park, so.
Do you know the width of the current house, so I can compare it to your proposed width?
We got the, we got the survey. Get it off the demo plan. I don't have that information right here. Uh, I can't scale it. What I could tell you like this, I could do like this, twenty, uh, thirty, I don't know, thirty. Yeah, I'll get it in a second.
About twenty feet, the current width.
You're just looking at, what about the piece in the back?
Well, you're asking the width of the, in the front, I think you're asking, right?
Oh.
Because it, the house is like, you know, it's like a, it's like two sections.
So now, when it's being calculated, would it include both the entire width?
Including that back portion?
No, it's calculated from the, the front of the building, I believe.
Yeah.
So-
It's either width from here, so here.
It's about, it's about ten, sixty-eight.
Okay, and the, under the ordinance, the lot width is measured at a line parallel to the front lot line, at the minimum required building setback, which would be twenty-five feet here, do you know what that distance is?
Is that the distance you used in determining what the-
No, we used the sixty-eight at, at the front lot line. You're saying the ordinance is at the twenty-five foot?
That's what it says, and since the lot gets wider, I'm, I'm trying to get you-
Got you, okay.
-conforming, which I'm gonna do some other things too, but-
Right, 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 right.
I was, I don't, I apologize, I don't have my current ordinance, Mr. Chairman, I, I discussed this with Richard Sherone before we filed this application, and I'm almost certain he told me that the, the lot width for purposes of this ordinance was based upon the width at the front.
Nobody's saying, nobody's saying-
Yeah, I, I think that's-
He's saying at the septum line, I understand that.
Trying to help us, right.
But the ord-
Where, where does it stand?
There's a definition of lot width.
You want to measure twenty-five feet, so let's go. Okay, let me go across. I got this. Let me, let me go, let me go. Second, let me go again. That doesn't make sense. Sixty-eight. Hold on one second. Yeah, but, in this. This is the sixty-five width of the lot.
Yeah, but you want it from the twenty-five.
You can measure parallel to the street. Sixty-two.
Sixty-nine, seven, based on this scale here. You went twenty-five in, and then across, but this is just some app, so I might, you know, yeah.
And since you have your devices out, what is, what is the permitted width?
Okay, permitted width, uh-
I'll, I'll read the definition for lot width, "The horizontal distance between the sidelines of a lot measured at right angles to its depth along a straight line parallel to the front line at the minimum required building setback line." A lot of words. But I'm, the front lot line.
I think there's confusion, because the ordinance that specifies the maximum width of the house seems to define the lot width differently, although it's not a model of clarity, but it talks about the width of the lot, sixty-five percent of the width of the lot frontages at any one point measured parallel to the street line.
But I don't see that as inconsistent with the definition of lot width, doesn't say at the street line.
I had this question again, and Richard told me that they've been, he's been interpreting it as the lot width is determined by the width at the front, which is what we went with.
I understand, but I, I have this annoying habit of being a land use lawyer who reads ordinances.
Right, right, forty-four feet, two inches would be what would, would be required, and we're requesting forty, forty-eight, so we're like four feet wider, if you, if you measure from the front, totally from, from the front, if you come back a little bit, it'll be better, right?
Okay, then my, on your site plan, you have, you have your covered front porch, and then you have what there can only be a wall between that and the garage, but then that goes into your actual first floor, but, one, I'm wondering, can't you push the garage back so it is lined up with the actual front wall there versus in the middle of the porch is what it really is lined up with, and then, can't you, I don't know what that extra width is accomplishing?
Not clear, if you look at drawing A1, our garage lines up, we, we just set back the front door of the house to make like a, you know, vestibular entry.
I, I understand that.
Right.
But then you have this protrusion coming out, because the garage is coming out, and question one, just so it isn't a solid wall like you're showing it, why not move the garage back so it's lined up with what I'll call the actual front wall of the house, not the porch?
That protrusion is part of the old house, I think that's what that, is that what you, that little white strip to the right?
Yes, but you're, you're, so many things to look at it to say, but you're basically totally altering the existing front of the house.
Yes, yes.
So I'm not sure why that little protrusion is staying there.
Well, aesthetically, we wanted that, if you look at the, you know, the rendering on the front, you know, on A1, we're trying to make everything look, you know-
But, but part of-
Lined up.
Part of the concern in terms of the ordinance was to not have a long, solid wall in the frontage.
Mm-hmm.
And if you move the garage back, you're avoiding that, and you're, and I'm gonna come to somewhat shrinking your first floor footprint to maybe conform, but, um-
Yeah.
I, it's just-
Well, with that, I think, but we'd still be, we, we still need the variance, because we'd still be over the width, we'd still be the same width.
Okay, but-
You're just saying-
Would be less. Okay, it's, it's a question of-
Aesthetically, it'll, right.
Of ideally eliminating the variance, but if not, trying to make it as small as possible, I think is, and, but at the moment, I'm just trying to understand what you're doing and why, and I'm not, because that width that, that's coming forward there is clearly too big to be a wall, and your first floor plan isn't showing anything in that space, other than the wall, I'm not sure what's happening there and why.
If we push the garage back, I think it'd be a completely different look, the way, you know, now we're trying to get, we have this two, two, two wings, and we have the center, it's just gonna change the whole aesthetics of this house. I'm not saying it's impossible to do, but it's just, we were trying to, we were trying to achieve that, you know, asymmetry, with the roofs, with the dormers.
The, where are the five bedrooms?
On A, A4? Door?
I want to know which floors there are, and I, I don't-
Second floor.
All, all five bedrooms are on the second floor.
Yes, right. Yes. Is that right, you have five bedrooms on the second floor, correct? Correct. And then, isn't there one on the lower level? There's a guest, there's a guest room. So that's-
Basement.
No, that's, there's a guest room on the, on the first floor. So, so how many total bedrooms are there? Well, there'd be seven with the basement as well. One in the basement, one on the first floor to the right of the kitchen, five on the second floor.
May I ask a question soon?
Okay, you can go, I'm not done, but why don't you go?
Okay.
The facts are evolving, as we're progressing through.
Yes, we're starting to understand better. How wide is the garage door, and how wide is the garage inside clear?
So the garage is twenty feet wide, and the garage door is eighteen.
Sixteen. You could make that more narrow, right, you're four feet away from being code compliant, right?
You want, you want a twenty-foot garage for two cars, it's just, I know how, I've seen two-car garages, you know, it's like measured them many times, and it's tight.
Thank you.
How many parking spaces for seven bedrooms, he's afraid to ask.
Okay, while you're looking-
It's three.
What?
Three bedroom, I'm three parking spaces.
So it doesn't go up with-
No, after five bedrooms, it stays at three.
Okay, and is the third parking space being proposed to comply with the RSIS standard, or because you need a third parking space?
Say again, comply with the, what was the first?
Residential site, the parking requirement?
Yes, right.
It, it, that's an either-or, do you, do you need it, or is it for ordinance compliance?
Per ordinance.
So if we said, do away with that, we'll give you a minimum exception for the RSIS standard?
We're fine.
Okay, that's just one, I'm not, I'm not, no one should take it, I'm advocating that one way or the other, I just want to understand-
Want to hear the answer.
What, why you're proposing it. Okay, any other questions from members of the board?
Um, I, I had one more, Mr. Chairman, so looking at the exhibit before me, and then looking at the architectural plan, that little strip in between the covered porch and the garage that's proposed, is that little strip going to be contributing to the garage, or is that remaining in, in the house, and, and if so, can you describe it on the architectural plan?
It, it's, it's contributing to the garage, and the diagram, it's just a diagram, you know, but it's not remain, not, it's not like there's a little piece remaining of that, of that, that strip is not remaining.
Okay, so-
But it's just a diagram to, you know, point out where the old house is, where the new enlargement is, and it'll, the garage goes right up to the, uh-
Okay, so, so then the way I should be looking at this diagram is that that little strip, even though it's part of the existing house to remain, and it's actually going to be-
Demolished.
-demolished as part of the garage, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board, Mr. Moore?
On the proposed second floor plan, right next to the, right next to bedroom number two, what is that, what's in between the primary bathroom and the bedroom number two, right on that angle, is that over the patio in the back, is that, is that not a part of the floor plan?
That's, that's just a, a cricket for the roof, the tri, the, the angle you're asking?
Mm-hmm, what's that, right, right.
The triangle, that-
It's like a box, a square, that's leading out to the corner.
Oh, 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 it's a fireplace, that's a fireplace below. I believe it's-
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's a fire-
I'm saying, is that, is that the actual, sorry, is that the layout, that box, that, that eleven-and-a-half, the eleven slash twelve foot, is that just a reference, or is that an actual room?
Oh, you asked with the-
I think that's what the question is.
Oh, is that what you asked, that's the roof over the family, yeah.
So there's, that's not a, a, that's not, that's not a second floor room to go into, that's just-
No, 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 I didn't realize you asked.
And under that is the patio on the first floor, is the patio?
No, 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 that's the roof over, there's a one-story, except, the first floor is a little lo, bigger.
Okay.
You know?
All right, just the floor plan, it just cuts, kind of-
Look at the elevations, you'll, you'll see the same thing.
Okay. And you see what I'm, so if you put the mou, right, right where the mouse is? Mm-hmm. Right, it's not a bedroom or anything like that?
No, look, look at A6, the last page, and you'll see the elevation, the right. I'll answer your question.
And where is that?
What, what do we look at?
A6, on the-
Yeah, show us the mounts.
This is the room below, this is what's under.
Right, I'm just saying, the elevation, you see?
Yeah, the bottom, yeah, you could, there it is, see that portion there? It's got it right down.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There's a high ceiling in that room, you know, some stuff.
Okay.
Sorry, so that's just a high ceiling with a window there, but it's all open space?
Cathedral ceiling, just, you know.
Okay.
So now, in terms of- So, now, in terms of, I guess, if you go to A3, in terms of calculating the width of the house, there's a little one-and-a-half-foot bump out after the office that's on the first floor. Is, is the distance counted to there?
Yeah, it's counted for the maximum width of the building.
Okay, and then, um.
Yeah, yeah.
A little confused by your answer on the existing house in terms of the rear portion that's located closer to Division Street, as to whether that's included or not included in doing the calculation.
For the building width?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is included, so it's the widest part of the structure compared to the front lot line.
Okay.
Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions for this witness? Okay, I want to call your next witness.
William Stimmel.
Thank you. Did you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address.
William Stimmel, S.T.I.M.M.E.L. My professional address is P.O. Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, offering Mr. Stimmel as expert in professional planning. We accept his qualifications based upon his prior appearances.
I assume you're still current in.
License is still current, yes.
We accept him.
Okay, all right. Mr. Stimmel, would you, you know, discuss the application and the variances that are being sought, in your opinion, as to whether those variances are justifiable under the municipal land use law standards?
Sure, just very briefly, the site is located in the R1, one-family zone in Mont Clair. Per the municipal ordinance, that zone is intended for the development with one-family detached dwellings. Also permitted uses in the zone are carriage houses and municipal facilities. The one-family detached dwelling on the property now is a permitted use. The proposed addition would remain a permitted use, and it's generally in keeping with the surrounding zoning, which is all R1 to the north, south, and west of the property. That also matches the development pattern in the area, which is almost exclusively single-family residential, again, to the north, south, and west, and then obviously you have the large park to the east of the property. There are a few C variances affected by the application. Right now, as proposed, the applicant is requiring three parking spaces. The existing smaller dwelling requires two parking spaces. There's zero existing parking on the subject property. With the modification to the site plan that's currently proposed, we're proposing three parking spaces so that existing parking variance is eliminated. Under existing conditions, and this is somewhat speculative, but it appears that the parking for the site would either occur on the paved portion of Division Street right-of-way or on Wildwood Avenue. There are three new C variances, and this is referenced from the January 6, 2025 Planning Department review. The first, 347-45B2, for the minimum front yard setback from Division Street, where 25 feet is required, 5.5 feet is existing, 6.5 feet is proposed, so we are maintaining that setback, slightly improving upon it. As it exists now, Division Street is an undeveloped paper street, which appears to be unlikely to be constructed. Mr. Tremblek had spoken to the Planning Department, and they gave the indication that the township wants to hang on to that parcel, at least in the short-term future, with the, the possibility that somehow it could be developed for an affordable unit. But because of the fact that it's considered a paper street, the Planning Department has applied the front yard setback requirement to Division Street as if it was a typical corner lot. The applicant is asking the board to look at this as if it was an interior lot. If the board were to look at this as an interior lot, the two-side yard setbacks, 6.5 feet to the left, 15.7 feet to the right, when looking at it from Wildwood Avenue, would comply with the ordinance requirements for an interior lot, where six feet's required to one side, 10 to the other. The second variance associated with the application is the one, there was some back-and-forth about a minute ago. The maximum width of the principal structure, ordinance 347-45C, parentheses, four, parentheses, A, 65% of the lot width is permitted for the width of the principal structure, and as calculated in the, the Planning Department review, 71.5% is proposed. So, that's taking the width of the structure versus the width of the property at the street line. The permitted width of the principal structure, based on 65% of the street line, would be 44.2 feet, so applying that standard, we'd be 4.3 feet wider than what's permitted. As the architect has indicated, the property becomes wider as you move from the front of the property, where it's 68 feet width, to the back of the property, where it's 79.8 feet in width. The width of the property at the front facade of the building is approximately 70 feet. I scaled it off of the survey. If you take 65% of that, the, the permitted width would be 45.5 feet, so the deficiency then would be down to three feet if you take it at the front facade of the building. In order to get to the width where it would permit the requested 48.5 feet, the property would have to be 74.6 feet wide. Property reaches that width slightly behind the location of the existing shed on the building. So, the, the width of the building would be compliant if it was pushed much further back on the property, and that's sort of the, the mathematical look at the variance. We had talked about it on our project team, and there was some indication that the intent of this section of the ordinance was to, to limit the, limit the bulk of the building, prevent the development of McMansions. To that extent, 25% coverage is permitted, we're at 21%, so we're, we're quite a bit below the coverage requirement. If the concern is that the, the board or the township wants to avoid something that's, looks like one of those Amazon warehouses that go up rather quickly everywhere, I think the architect's plans show that there's a good degree of articulation in the building. It, it provides attractive aesthetics, and I, I don't think that particular concern really applies here either. And then the third variance is for 347-45C, where no parking is permitted between the main building and the curb of the street on which the building fronts. And again, the architect has provided a sketch which shows that third parking space being located around the right side of the building to the west, so that variance would actually be eliminated by the proposed revision to the plan. Even with that additional coverage, that, we're still below the requirement for the impervious coverage in the zone. So, those are the variances associated with the application. As with any application for a variance, the applicant has to show that the positive and negative criteria have been satisfied. For the, the C variance, you, you can provide the positive criteria through the C1, the hardship variance, or the C2 flexible C. And I think there is a hardship element related to the variance for the front yard setback on Division Street, because of the fact that it's a paper street, and also because of the fact that there's an intent to maintain a portion of the existing structure at that location. We are, to a large degree, maintaining, slightly improving upon that existing setback variance, but for the most part, these are C2 flexible C variances, where the purposes of zoning are advanced and the benefits in granting the variance outweigh any detriments. In reviewing the purposes of the MLUL, I found three purposes which are advanced by this application. The first is Purpose A, which promotes the health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We're redeveloping an underdeveloped property, providing new housing stock, and eliminating that existing parking deficiency. You know, obviously, parking in this por, portion of Mont Clair is not as big an issue as it is closer to Bloomfield Avenue, but it's a concern in any residential neighborhood, so we're providing fully compliant parking. We also advance Purpose C, which is to provide adequate light, air, and open space. The garage in the front of the building allows for better use of the rear yard, more landscaped area. You eliminate the potential of having that ribbon of asphalt going to the detached garage at the rear of the property, and would be more beneficial. The decrease in coverage would be beneficial to the community. The greater use of the rear yard is certainly beneficial to the residents and to the neighbors as well, from an aesthetic perspective. Also, Purpose I, the municipal land use law, which is to promote a desirable visual environment. We're providing an aesthetically pleasing new or, or substantially modified building, which is largely compliant with the regulations for the zone, and more complimentary to the existing dwellings in the area. The sighting of the building on the property is more in keeping with the adjoining residences in the neighborhood. Right now, the front facade of that building is a little bit further back than the, the front facades of the adjoining properties on Wildwood Avenue. If we pushed it all the way back to comply with the width requirement in the zone, you'd have the, the front of the building being in the backyard of the neighbors' houses, essentially. And then the negative criteria for these variances, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and where it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. I see no detriment to the public good with the granting of these variances, substantial or otherwise. The requested variance relief is relatively minor in nature, and given the context of the application, the requests are reasonable. I think what we have here is a clear improvement on what's existing on the property now, and the project is an overall benefit to the, to the adjoining residences on Wildwood Avenue.
Okay, I have nothing further.
In your thoughts, like, the, the, the lot width, the, the way it's written in the zone, isn't it written to avoid these types of situations? Like, is this house a McMansion in your terminology? Like, isn't, doesn't, do you think that that, that was created to, you know, not have this happening?
The, the McMansion question is interesting. I, I think the intent with the McMansion is to maximize the, maximize the development yield of the property. The, the lot is allowed to be up to 25% building coverage, we're at 21%, so we're substantially below that, even with this additional width. I, I think the intention of it is, as the architect said, there's an element of preserving some of the existing structure, the need to provide that garage, the, the intent to keep it closer to the street, to reduce the coverage, and to preserve as much of the rear yard as possible, so I, I would not consider this a McMansion. To me, that means something like, you know, what's referred to as the bayon board. It's the, the big rectangle that comes up to all the setbacks and maximizes the building coverage, and that's not, you know, that's not what we have here.
The lot is pretty long, so you, you will, you won't meet that 20%, you know, coverage that you were talking about, because it's a longer lot, but we're dealing with the front of this building, so like, it's somewhat, it puts us, this, this application at kind of a crossroads in that sense, is that, yes, we're not going to approach the, the coverage issue, because the lot is so long, it's over 200 feet long, but at, at where we want to build this house, the, the frontage part where, you know, the coverage aspect is, it, it, it's kind of the, you know, it's the weakness of that aspect in that, in our argument.
Yeah, I'm, the applicant is asking for the variance relief. We acknowledge that it's a variance. At least under the existing conditions, you've got that adjoining paper street to the side of the property, which is, in my professional opinion, unlikely to be developed. It doesn't appear to be wide enough to be developed with a single-family house, but who knows what the future may hold. So, you know, functionally, if you go out there now, it looks like that paper street is part of the property. If you consider that additional width, then, which is not part of the property, and we're not saying that it is, but it would be, it, it reduces the impact to the width of the building.
And is there thoughts of maybe, you said there could be a development on that paper street someday down the line? You said something?
Mr. Tremblek had contacted the Planning Department just informally to talk about the possibility of incorporating that into the, into the property, into the project, and that the response he got was that they weren't, they were holding on to it. There was the potential for something at some point down the road.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stimmel, did you had an opportunity to visit the site?
Yes, I did.
Did you see any evidence of the, I'm not sure if the, if the site is occupied, but did you see any evidence of the driveway or the, the paper street being used as a parking, basically driveway?
The, I said it was speculative on my part. If you, if you look at it, it appears to be part of the property.
Yeah.
You know, without benefit of a survey, you would think it was the driveway for that house. When I went there, there were no cars parked on the street, other than mine, and there were no cars parked in the driveway. The residents would have to park somewhere, those seem to be the likely locations.
Yep. And, and then there, there's still, I guess, I'm looking at, was there a sign that says private property? Because it seems like it does not allow for other cars to go there.
There is some kind of a sign at the end of that driveway. Just bear with me, I'm going to refer to my.
It's an offense.
Site photos. There was a sign there that said, "Private driveway, no U-turn, no entrance." Looks like a typical red and white parking sign, as of when I did my site visit on March 14th.
All right, thank you.
I'll ask the, I'll ask the, the same question. When you did the, the site visit, would you say that the house in its existing state is comparable to the size of the other houses?
It's an interesting question. I, I didn't necessarily look at it in the terms of the size of the building. It was more of a, that was Mr. Cruz? I, I looked at it more in terms of the appearance of the building, which, to me, was a little bit rundown compared to the adjoining properties on Wildwood Avenue. The size, I was less concerned about because of the fact that we weren't asking for coverage variance for the building. I, I could look into that and get back to you, I don't have that answer at my fingertips.
Okay, and then, I guess, a similar question with respect to the lot width?
It is, the proposed building is wider than, I would say, the majority of the properties on the street.
And then also, I apologize, there, there are no accessory structures in the, in the rear yard?
Right now, there's an existing shed on the property. The, the shed is behind the main dwelling, just past the end of the, the paved portion of the paper street. As far as the proposed condition, I, I don't believe there was, but.
No.
Yeah, no, that existing shed's to be removed, so there's no, there's no outbuildings, no sheds, et cetera.
Okay. And then, there was no, there was no, like, stormwater prepared at this time of the application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
The, the applicant, of course, would have to comply with any applicable regulations.
Right, all right, thank you.
Clarification, you said there's a sign at the end of Division Street next to the property saying, "Private property, do not enter?"
There, there was a sign as of March 14th, when I did my site visit, next to that paved section of Division Street, that said, "Private driveway, no U-turn, no entrance."
But it's not a private park, that's, that's.
It's a paper street.
But, for clarification, I mean, it's a paper street, but that belongs to the town. They can't claim that for their own property.
Correct.
Okay, so, we, we shouldn't expect to see any parking by the resident on that paper street?
Yeah, if I'm going to approach this tree here, the sign is on the left side of the driveway towards the park. the driveway towards the park. Can't quite make it out in that picture.
But again, if you did not know, you would think that was part of that person's property, and that sign kind of claims that.
You would think that, yes.
Okay. So, I would have a problem with that. On the other side, the third parking space, which is proposed, you no longer need a variance for, correct?
Correct.
But, how far back are you allowed? Like, if you wanted to park in tandem on that side of the house, even if you don't pave, like, could you basically line up cars on that other side of the house in front of that, you know, past the 18-foot that's designated?
You might be able to squeeze a smaller car in there, but the way it's shown on that sketch, it angles out pretty quickly, so it really would not, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't straighten it out. You'd be at an odd angle. So, the intention there is not to park a car in front of the, in front of that 11-foot eight by 18-foot rectangle. It's just to allow that to reach the rectangle.
But you could.
Well, sure, you could park on the grass, but, you know, you provide the two garage spaces and the space next to it, it complies with the requirement.
I bring it up because for a seven-bedroom residence, I expect multiple cars to be available. And if there's the potential to be parking in undesignated areas, I would have a concern, especially against the park or in a residential area. That's, that's all. No further questions.
Yeah, the applicant made the modification to try to comply with the requirement and eliminate the variance for parking in front of the building, between the building and the curb line. So, you know, to that extent, we have complied with the RSIS requirement, and we believe we have eliminated the variance for parking in front of the building as well. Thank you.
What type of lighting do you plan to put on the improvement to the house?
That would probably be a better question for the architect.
Any lighting?
Can you answer it? Because otherwise, he has to be sworn in.
We're going to put standard lighting on the exterior, maybe something in the soffits. We don't have an exact lighting plan at this moment.
I say that to say, because it...
Yeah, sconces outside.
Okay. I say that because this, it abuts a park, and it's right in the corner, you know, where it can kind of be somewhat isolated and, you know, for safety and just for the area, I think that lighting would be important, as well as a stormwater plan.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, stormwater, we have to deal with, with the engineer when permits are applied for grading and drainage plans would have to be submitted, and certainly, that's pointed out in the planning department memo, when we would expect that to be a condition of approval.
How close to the line will this be? Because I see that the, this is going to get quite close to the property line, and your neighbor wouldn't be too far off.
On the Division side?
On the, let's see, Division side.
On the right side, if you're...
The Division goes into the park, so, no, on the Woodland side, like, 56 Woodland Avenue?
The building is 15 feet 8 inches off of the property line. 10 feet is the requirement, so we're, we have a good factor of safety there.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Division Street has mystified me for over 50 years, and this has more mystified me. Some of the questions deal with the portion north of Wildwood, but we'll skip over those since they're not part of this. But, I also discovered a place I can park when there are vents in Brookdale Park. But, I guess, based on the tax maps, Division Street is, the right-of-way is 50 feet wide. Is that correct?
I don't have a printout of the tax map, but that seems to be right.
It is in, somewhere on the second page of figure three of the planner's memo.
Yes, it's 50 feet wide, a little bit wider back past the southern limit of the property.
I'm assuming that 50 feet is what it is throughout, other than the question I'm about to ask you. And are most of the lots on this side of Wildwood 50 feet wide? This lot and the lot next to it are wider, but are most of the other lots 50 feet wide?
Yeah, at least on the portion of the tax map that's shown, the lots are about 50 feet.
So, it would, it would be feasible for the township to vacate the road and develop a single-family, have a single-family home developed on that lot, and that lot, in fact, extends deep, the right-of-way extends deeper than the existing lots that front on Wildwood. Is that correct?
It does extend deeper than the lots which front on Wildwood, correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask you a question you don't really have to answer, as I'm somewhat mystified by this little, looks like it's showing a vacation of the end of Wildwood and giving half to either side, half of which is going to Division Street, half to the lot across the street, because one of the mysteries of Division Street is why the two sides don't line up, but I'll ignore that. I'm assuming the township will fix this side, but I don't know why they didn't want it to extend, because the private portion of Division Street is necessary for the house, the one lot that actually fronts on Division Street that's not on the corner, but that's another mystery for another day if that lot ever comes in. But, I guess, you know, it's, well, and I'm not sure calling this paper when you have this paved, what's become a driveway, and it's totally accurate, but I don't think we can assume that this is going to stay undeveloped, because there is a logic of the township vacating and providing for a house. And there's been discussion on the other side of Wildwood of developing affordable on the township-owned property there. But, so, part of this is, I do think we need to address stormwater on that side. I mean, the slope is downhill going towards the park. Would you agree?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and, Sanab, do you know, normally, NEGLIA has been reviewing the single families where they're doing as much disturbance as here. Do you know why this didn't go to them?
It would go to them, but they don't need to do that until they get their building permit, so it's an optional for the applicant if they want to...
But for a number of others, we've gotten their review.
Yeah, they chose to do so.
Which is somewhat helpful, which...
We encourage it when we can.
Can we, as a board, require that happen, so we're not in the dark? I mean, we had the issue last week on the ADU where we had the NEGLIA review, and we had a variety of questions related to that. I just think it would be helpful to us.
So, would the NEGLIA review require them to submit civil plans with their architectural...
Well, I, well, on the ADU application, they didn't have civil, and they still had a multi-page letter, which is a different issue in the world, but...
Yes.
So, it's somewhere between a full engineering review and some sense of where is stormwater going, and is it running a risk of impacting the adjoining properties?
So, like, a draft design of their stormwater plan?
I'm just saying, you know, putting a drywell here or whatever.
Right.
Okay. Back to this application. The, so, I want to make sure we're in agreement on how the building width is being calculated. So, the definition of lot width was read as the horizontal distance between the sidelines of a lot measured at right angles to its depth along a straight line parallel to the front lot line at the minimum required building setback line. And then, you have the other, that Mr. Tremulak read, "The maximum permitted width of a principal structure shall be 65% of the width of the lot frontages at any one point measured parallel to the street line." Do you see that as any way inconsistent with the definition as to where that's to be measured?
I would add one additional thing. The definition of lot frontage is the length of the front lot line measured at the street right-of-way line.
But, we're dealing with lot width.
Right. But, the definition for the building width is 65% of the width of the lot frontages. I'm not sure I have a definitive answer on this. I was looking at this earlier in the hearing when the discussion was going on with me seated at the back. I had taken it to be interpreted, as the planning department did, that it was taken from the width at the street line. I could see where you're coming from, taking it at the setback line. You know, this is easier, and ordinances usually work better if everything's a rectangle, which is not the case here.
It's one, I'm trying to be helpful, because the further back you go on the lot, the wider it gets, and in terms of, like, lots on cul-de-sacs, that would be also helpful, is to...
You know, if you look at it, it also says that 65% of the width of the lot frontage is at any one point measured parallel to the street line. So, depending on how liberally you take that "any," you could take it where the existing shed is on the property where it's much wider and say, okay, you know, this is what we're basing the width on here.
Dealing with the purpose of the ordinance, I think we're all in agreement, this was to not create what I'll call a structure that appears large from the street. Do you agree with that?
Correct.
Okay. And, the, and I guess there, you could look at this either way, but it would be, the further back, the building is, it's, I guess, how you would perceive it in terms of the frontage and whatever, but I, picturing cul-de-sacs in my mind is what I'm doing.
One other thing which I probably should have hit in my presentation is that the front yard setback requirement is 25 feet. The building is proposed to be at 36 and 1/2 feet, so you're 11 and 1/2 feet back from the setback line, so you, doing that also diminishes the width.
One of the things which is, but this minimum setback is 25 feet, or the average of the houses next to it, which would just be houses in the one direction, and that's probably giving a distance more than 25. The two houses adjacent are, look to be similar. The third house up, it looks closer to the street. So, it's probably a number between the 25 feet and the 31 feet would be my guess as the minimum setback. But I'm, I can tell, no one has done that calculation, and I'm just going to assume you're okay with the 31 feet that's shown, because it doesn't look like any of the houses are further back than this house.
Would that, that would be for the Division Street setback? You're measuring the Wildwood?
No, no, for the, for the setback from Wildwood.
Okay, yeah.
Division Street, I don't, we don't cross the street, so it's, it's just the 25 feet that applies. Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Are there any members of the audience who have questions for the applicant, for this witness? Mr. Tremulak, do you have anything further?
No further witnesses.
Are there any members of the audience who have any questions, testimony, statements, anything you want to say about the application? Okay. Mr. Tremulak, do you want to sum up?
I mean, briefly, I mean, I understand the concern about the bulk and the, you know, we're obviously adding a lot of building to this existing property, but it's a very deep lot. It's over a third of an acre, and, you know, as Mr. Stimmel pointed out, we're still, you know, we're allowed 25% coverage, we're only at 21%. So, you could take a piece off the side of the, of the structure to make it comply, but we've got, you know, we could have built this prop, the house out much deeper in the rear. I mean, we're showing, I think, a 94, 95% rear, 95-foot rear yard where the requirement is 52 feet. So, there's a lot more building that could have, could be built in the back, and again, still within the coverage. So, still going to have a big house either way. You know, and the other way of looking at this, too, you know, we're trying to work with the existing house. I mean, if you, if the existing house was demolished and you built an entirely new house and made it comply with the lot width, again, with 25% lot coverage, you're still going to have a house as big and more likely bigger than what's proposed here. I also think the location at the end of Wildwood Avenue does sort of, you know, minimize the, any detriment resulting from that extra three or four feet of width. And, again, Mr. Stimmel, I don't want to repeat all the arguments he made. You know, I think some minor adjustments could possibly be made. I know the chairman pointed out that notch that sort of sticks out towards the rear of the house on the Division Street side, which does affect the width calculation. I know my client would certainly eliminate that. I think, I think it's the fireplace, but they could make that flush without the building protruding another, you know, foot or so there, which would then, again, reduce the deficiency, to be, you know, close to complying. And again, if you calculate the requirement as of the setback line, it's even less of a deficiency because of the fact that, you know, we have an unusual lot that gets wider as you get deeper into the lot. So, you know, I think the variances are justified. It's obviously a significant improvement over what's currently on the property, which benefits the neighborhood as well. So, I would hope that the board would agree and approve the variances.
Start discussion, Mr. Church.
The plans introduced are certainly an improvement over what's there now, that's for sure. I have... I have no problem with improving lot sizes, improving lots in town with nice architecture. I'm just concerned, I'm a little concerned about the amount of light this building's going to generate in, in that area, just with the building, without any exterior lighting or anything else added. However, that, that would happen with any house in, in my estimation. So, I would be in favor of this application. I think that the variances sought are minimal variances because of the size of the lot and the, the way it's configured. And with the park on its, on one side of it, it, it doesn't really cause any problems to neighbors. So, I would be in favor of the application. I just, I get concerned when I start seeing these monster houses going up. It's just, we've got enough of them in this town. And it's not, not bad, but it's, let's not add to it if we don't have to. But this monster house, in my estimation, will fit on this lot and probably not be obtrusive to the environment or to the neighbors with adequate foliage, contained lighting on the outside to aid egress and to cut down the glow that would go into, to Brookdale Park. So, I would be in favor of the application.
Mr. Caulfield.
Um, I mean, I'm in favor of almost all the, all the zoning that are there, but I do have an issue with the front yard. I mean, I think it was written, I think that, that, that code was written for houses like this. And we've had many of these applications that have come to this board and we've denied them. And, you know, I just, you know, if, if, if it was four feet long, I think you have longer enough property to put something in the back of that to make up for that. So, I'm in favor of most of those variances, except that one. Thank you.
Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also in favor of the application. Given the uniqueness of this property, I think, um, the, the proposed, uh, the new house is under the lot coverage requirement. So, I think that, given this lot, it's pretty big. So, I think it's, um, it will, it will, it will go well. I was a little concerned about the frontage as well with the, with the wide, with the width of the, how wide it was. However, given the uniqueness of the, of the lot and it's near, next to, um, to the, to the park, I think it will, it will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. So, I'm in favor.
Mr. Griffith.
Um, I, it's a very nice house, very, uh, nice design, very considered, uh, but it is all new and is from scratch. The existing house didn't impact the way in which the plans are laid out and it's four feet wider than it should be. And I guess in my mind, it doesn't really have to be. I understand the extenuating circumstances. The city may take that paper road and turn it into a house lot for money. I don't know. Who knows what will happen in the future? Those are my reservations. I think it's a, a, a nice, well-considered proposal. I don't know that I could stand by it, but, uh-
Mr. Cruz.
Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm in a similar vein. I'm partially in favor of the application. Doing a quick little Google Maps, it seems like the current size of the house is comparable to some of the, the neighboring lots. And so, by doubling the size of the house, you're going to be making this house sizably larger than the neighboring houses. Now, with respect to the coverage, you know, you're entitled to build up to 25%. Um, you know, with the side yard, front yard variance, I think that's totally reasonable. Division Street's a paper street, it's been so for a very, very long time. But when it comes to the, the lot width, because there's the ability with some creativity to find that extra four feet, I would, I would expect that to, to be done. So, I, I'm in agreement with the other variances, but not with the lot width.
Mr. Simon.
Uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the application. My only concern is that the Division Street setback is capped at the 6.6 in case there is any kind of future development, so they don't encroach on it any further. I'm in favor.
Mr. Moore.
I'm generally in favor of the application. I think that it will be certainly an enhancement to the existing site. My concern is, uh, is also with regards to Division Street and if they plan on doing any type of a development on that site. I think that, um, there should be a way that you can look to, um, bring the property further on the setback, right? So that it's not so upfront and doesn't appear as large. Um, I know we've already, this, I've made mention of the stormwater, but once you, you know, if approved and you pull the permits, I think that it would be important to, um, have something strong enough, right? So that it does not, um, yeah, so everything is well-contained, even on that paper street. Right? That's it.
I, I have no issue with the proposed setback to Division Street. The existing house is closer than that to Division Street. They're improving the situation by removing the porch that's on that side of the house. I think in the event that Division Street is vacated, whether just, um, for purposes of developing a house on it, they're keeping what would be the six-foot side yard setback requirement. I think we should impose that as a condition just because, to be clear, the portions of the existing house that are within that are being removed. I, I have, um, they're eliminating the parking variance. I'm going to come back to that. But, um, I have problem with the width of the structure. I think this is a very large house that's being proposed. They're proposing seven bedrooms, which is, you know, so I think, I'm not advocating it how they should meet it, but I think they should reconform to, to the ordinance for the width of the building. I think there are a variety of options they have and, um, including, as Mr. Caulfield, they can build further back if they want all the rooms. It's, um, it's just the appearance. I mean, this really is a situation that was the intention when they adopted this ordinance to a deal, deal with that. Sanab, since I was supposed to say this in the beginning, should make a note for our annual report that that lot front width, how that's calculated, should be clarified. But I just, I'm not sure, any other place in the ordinance that lot width is used and it makes sense it being used here, but that should be clarified, um, since Richard and I have come up with differing views as to how to do that. The, I think in terms of other conditions, um, that they adhere to the requirements of the engineering review. When that is done, that the stormwater from the east side of the house be directed not to the east, both because it's currently, would go to a paved area, which is not good. And if there's a house lot, it would be our normal condition. That they, um, that the parking space that's proposed on what was marked A1 be designed as shown, so its proposed 11-foot, eight-inch width not be reached until it reaches the front edge, edge of the garage and that it only extend back one, the, I'm going to say 20 feet just to do with normal parking space dimension. So, it would be limited to a 20 feet long, 11, feet, eight feet, eight inches wide. That would be the distance that, and then it would be tapered as shown on A1. That they remove the signage and other, any other indicia of ownership of Division Street be removed forthwith because I do not want them appropriating township property, which is clearly, you know, and long before your ownership of the lot that someone decided, ooh, we don't have, they don't have parking, let's use Division Street for parking. And, um, now that you're going to have parking, that should not be continued. Um, I think I, okay. Any other discussion among board members? If not, someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve what the restrictions stated by the chair.
So, that's a motion to approve the front yard setback from Division Street, but to deny the building width variance, subject to the conditions that were just outlined by the chair. Correct?
There a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess, since we're eight, Mr. Cruz is-
Out of luck.
But we still are glad you're here and your comments are always helpful. And we'll get to a meeting where you'll get to vote. Do you want to call the roll?
Yes. Uh, Chair Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield.
Yes.
Mr. Church.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Mr. Griffith.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Nice design.
Okay, is, um, we're back in two weeks and then we'll have a month before the May meeting. So, the first May meeting is being liquidated.
Should we make that announcement? Should we announce it? That May 7th is canceled?
You can announce it, but you're still going to have to notice it.
Yeah, we'll notice. But just for anyone here, May 7th, 2025 meeting is canceled. We'll be meeting on May 21st, 2025.
Yes. We'll also be meeting on April 16th.
And April 16th.
A fuller agenda than tonight. Okay. A motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How many to the 16th?